And then I will let you know when we're on Facebook. All right, we are now streaming live.
Okay. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April 16th, 2020. Here's how, whoops, did I skip some stuff?
Skip ahead, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry guys. Let's see, pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act 1010640, public bodies may in certain circumstances hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Pritzker's executive order 202130 has extended this provision through December 11th, 2021. As chair of the finance committee, I've made this, made the determination that it's not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, the me, this meeting of the finance committee is being conducted virtually with members of the committee, village staff and staff, village board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Crowley is in the village hall conference room in compliance with the open meetings act. Can I have a roll call please?
Trusty Vrie.
Yes.
Trusty Hallwax, trustee Ruben.
Yes.
And I'll just note for the record that we have all other members of the village board present as well this evening, including the village president.
As noted, today's finance committee meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. Forum of members is present via remote access. As acquired by law, I will ask for a roll call rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April 16th, 2020, this is where I started the first. Here is how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and the telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I would ask that Jordan Lester read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Jordan, are there any public comments?
Oh, trustee Vrie, we did not receive any.
If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe meeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments written, comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. We completed our agenda items for both of these meetings at our last meeting discussing the budget. So we will not continue the discussion tonight. However, we do need to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the following. Two C, two C two collective bargaining, two C 11 pending litigation and two C one personnel. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Trusty Vrie, you need to second it.
Yeah, second.
Okay. I will, trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trusty Vrie.
Yes.
Okay, so folks will leave this Zoom and head to the closed session Zoom that Steve Alrod sent out. We will leave this one. Yes.
You can start without me, I need to pull over so I can pick all the right buttons.
Okay. No problem.
Start without me and I'll be there in a moment.
Do it safely, we'll see you in a minute.
Uh oh, I didn't get that.
Harry, is the committee done with closed session? Okay, thank you.
Jordan, we're coming back in.
Wonderful, thank you.
And Jordan, just so you know, um, the Finance Committee still needs to be adjourned, so we have to take that action first.
Understood, thank you.
John and Gary here yet?
Not yet.
Can I close the meeting without Gary here? We've got to.
Uh, yeah, you can. I think a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, now that we're back, can I have a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting?
Uh, I'll move, but I wasn't here to open it.
That's okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, trustee, trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned from the Finance Committee meeting. Howard, the tie, we are past seven PM, so you can begin if you want.
Pursuant, uh, um, to amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present at any one location. Governor Pritzker's executive order twenty twenty one dash thirty has extended this provision through December eleventh, twenty twenty one. As village president, I've made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the village board is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through the Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Corrali is present in the council chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So for the first item of business, I'd like, uh, to have a roll call.
Okay, hold on just one second, trustee, or President Rowan, we're trying to get trustee, uh, Onderdunk moved over from the, from the chief seats into the group.
Good plan.
Just one second.
One second.
Jordan, Jordan's working on that. Okay, there we go. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Onderdunk. You are muted, trustee Onderdunk. I see him. There we go. Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
And I'm here. Um, as noted, today's board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software, and is being audio recorded and final cast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of the members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than voice vote on any agenda item requiring a vote. Uh, we're now at the second item consideration of the minutes, and I'd request a motion to approve the minutes for the committee of whole, uh, of the hall on October twenty one at six PM, and the Board of Trustees' regular meeting on October twenty one at seven PM. Uh, Village Manager Corrali, could you do a roll call?
We need a motion and a second.
Second.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the third item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the board approved on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'd ask, uh, that Assistant to the Village Manager, Jordan Lester, read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting, if any. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Specifically, any public comments received as component of tonight's public hearing on the village's tax levy will be read during the public hearing. Uh, Jordan, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
President Rowan, we did not receive any.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe meeting at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to four hundred words. Uh, the fourth item on the agenda is a report of committees. Uh, there is no report of the committee of the hall. Um, the next item is the Finance Committee. Uh, trustee Vrie, is there a report on the Finance Committee?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, so we had our meeting on Tuesday, um, and we went through our normal, our, our normal, um, agenda item of reviewing the, the monthly finances for the village. Um, twenty twenty one continues a very good year from a financial perspective. Um, general fund revenues are continuing to trend above plan. Uh, most of that's coming from sales tax, from sales tax and, um, permit, permits for, for construction. So been a very good year for finances. Um, again, I've mentioned sort of surprising, but altogether very good. Um, and then we went through the CIP, um, nothing out of the ordinary there as well. Most of the meeting was spent going through the twenty twenty two budget. Um, and we went through the entire budget in our meeting on Tuesday, uh, with lots of reports from the various, uh, department heads. Uh, and I, I, I think, you know, I'll let, we'll do a budget presentation later, but that was the discussion of the, um, of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Um, uh, the next item is the Plan Commission. Trustee Listener, do you have a report on the Plan Commission?
I actually don't have a report because we did not meet this past month.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, is the Golf Advisory Committee. Uh, trustee Hallwax, is there a report on the Golf Advisory Committee?
Yes, thank you. Keep it reasonably brief as golf is winding down, which, uh, does mean that we'll be moving into more of the, the reporting will be more on the, on the Friends of the Glencoe Golf Course, um, fundraising. But, um, just to, uh, to recap, your today rounds are at forty two thousand eight hundred and one, which is a new record. So this exceeds the previous high by thirteen hundred rounds, which is amazing, and revenues exceeded the budget by eighty one percent. So moving on to the Friends of the Golf, uh, Glencoe Golf Course, or the fundraising entity, uh, the balance right now is over a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. Importantly, a campaign director named Debbie Guggenheim was hired. We had a meeting last night to meet her and do a lot of brainstorming, uh, some whiteboarding, including, you know, ways to raise awareness. And the, um, GoFundMe page should be launching tomorrow. So again, one of the, one of the things that's come out of some of these, these strategy sessions. And we're going to have an email campaign starting this Monday, which is going to culminate on Giving Tuesday, which is November thirtieth. So, um, given the weather, I'm not sure how much more golf we're going to get in, but the golf course is going to remain open for walking only and, um, but the rest of the golf course driving range and, or the driving range and restaurant are closed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, the next item is the Sustainability Task Force. Trustee Mulvaney, is there a report on the Sustainability Task Force?
Now, certainly, the volunteers on the Sustainability Task Force continue to work very hard to make Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the galaxy. Uh, some of the things we have, um, been working towards are the leaf blower ban, which I'm sure the board is familiar with now, and appreciate that support. Uh, continuing to build a larger regional interest in this topic. Uh, everything else from chickens to water conservation to, um, to getting public message out are all very important initiatives which we continue to move forward. We are constantly looking for additional volunteers. Uh, you do not need to be a member of the task force in order to participate in our programs. Uh, so please, I encourage anyone who has interest to come and find out what they can do to help our mission. That's the report. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, trustee Ruben, is there a report on the Council for Inclusion and Community?
There is. We met on the third of November and, uh, we spoke about our next town hall panels with some detail about the next coming one. Although I don't have the date, but it will be in February at Writers Theater. They graciously to help us again with our next, in terms of use of the hall, as it were. Um, the, since we talked about, uh, continuing those on a quarterly basis and what some of the topics might be, we spoke a fair amount about, uh, what we would like to see posted on the website, the village website with regard to the council and how we might, uh, do things a tad differently or have a little more information there in terms of educating the community on some things. And we also spoke about ways in which we can try to communicate with the community at large in terms of getting a survey out and getting more feedback and ideas from the community in terms of what the council was doing. Um, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Uh, thank you. Um, and, uh, finally, trustee Yonder Dunk, is there a report on the Historic Preservation Commission this month?
There is. There is. On Tuesday, November second, the Historic Preservation Commission met to hold an advisory review for modifications to the honorary landmark at two fifty Sheridan Road. Per village ordinance, the commission does not hold an advisory review for interior landmark renovations. However, in this case, the homeowner, Mr. Joseph Cacciatore, requested the commission's non-binding architectural guidance. And wanted to mention that we could do this for homeowners that are interested in, uh, a professional review of the work and improvements that they're making to their, uh, buildings. In this case, oh, in addition, then the commission continued its ongoing discussions regarding the proposed historic preservation ordinance amendments. Uh, and, um, we also, uh, took a look at three demolition permit applications. Oh, um, uh, due to the condition of the structures and the lack of authority to really intervene in the demolitions, we decided not to take any action. The next meeting will be on December seventh at five thirty. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, that takes care of the reports of our village committees. Uh, item four on the agenda is reports of officers, and first, the village manager's report, uh, Village Manager Corrali.
Thank you, President Rowan, and good evening, everyone. Uh, first, uh, just to, to point back to something trustee Vrie mentioned. Uh, this week, we did, uh, present to, uh, the board through the Finance Committee, uh, the full draft, uh, calendar year twenty twenty two budget. Uh, we did that on Tuesday night. We will be presenting that formally, uh, to the village board, uh, at your December sixteenth village board meeting. Uh, as I noted last month, uh, the draft of the budget is posted to the village's website, uh, and we encourage folks to take a look at that, um, and to, um, uh, read through it. There is a great deal of very good and, I think, uh, helpful information in terms of understanding the village's finances and our financial planning. So, uh, again, thank you to all of the, the members of the board who participated, uh, this week in, in that discussion. Uh, I wanted to report, uh, on a, uh, what I like to think is a very happy, uh, subject and something that, um, uh, I, I believe all of you will agree is a, is a happy subject, and that is, uh, the subject of some of our excellent employees. Um, yesterday, our staff team gathered for an in-person employee appreciation luncheon. Normally, we hold this event indoors in the public safety apparatus bay, but we thought an option that would accommodate more COVID nineteen protocols, uh, by allowing us to gather outdoors. Um, I'm very grateful we were able to use Lakeshore Country Club's outdoor terrace tent for the event. Where almost eighty employees were able to gather safely. Uh, as usual, the event gives us the opportunity to look back on the past year and celebrate the successes of our team. Uh, and we weren't able to meet last year in person. We did do it, uh, over Zoom, which really isn't quite the same. Uh, so we had a lot to talk about, a lot to reflect on, and a lot to be grateful for as we look back really over the last two years. Uh, and as the board knows, our team really has been exemplary, and it was nice to be able to celebrate their dedication to the community. One important way that we celebrate every year is the announcement of our Employee of the Year, and I always love to be able to announce that uh, at this board meeting every November. Uh, this year's recipient is Public Safety Officer Robert Zakansky, and Jordan's going to put a picture up on the screen, uh, who has been a public safety officer since twenty ten. Officer Zakansky is a dependable, valued, and trusted member of the public safety team, and currently serves as a field training officer helping to onboard new members of our department, and has served in the past as an evidence technician for the North Regional Major Crimes Task Force. This year alone, Officer Zakansky received four memorandum of record, recognition awards from Chief Lewandowski for exceptional police work, as well as three complimentary letters from residents and other law enforcement agencies. He was nominated for this award by two individuals, uh, including the chief and one of, uh, his supervisors. The comments in these nominations included the following: that Officer Zakansky is a valuable, valuable asset to our organization. He has one of the most positive attitudes here and sets a great example for all other employees. With everything he does, he does it with the best interests of our citizens in mind. Likewise, in the chief's nomination, he noted that Officer Zakansky has achieved a level of professional job performance that goes well beyond the high expectations of a Glencoe Public Safety Officer. He consistently shows the initiative to complete all daily work tasks and provides excellent service beyond his required duties. His professional work ethic and courteous demeanor contributes to the public service image promoted by the department. He is deserving of this recognition as he represents both the village and the department extremely well, as he performs his daily duties with distinction and honor. Most importantly, he does this with no desire for attribution. Rather, he does it because he firmly believes it's the right thing to do in service to others. Uh, I would just add, uh, to those, those really, uh, poignant and strong statements about Officer Zakansky's character. Uh, my own accolades that in all of my interactions with him, he has both the, he has tremendous professional acumen, but is also incredibly approachable, welcoming, and, and just a but is also incredibly approachable, welcoming, and just a gracious human being. I'm very grateful to Robert for his service to the community, and I'm truly proud to have him as part of our staff team. This is a nice opportunity to to see Officer Zakansky here up on the screen. And and normally, in normal times, we'd have him join us in the boardroom. When we're back in person, I think we'll drag him in so everybody can can say thank you to his face. But I think he was genuinely touched by the by the award. I do not think he expected it at all. I saw surprise on his face when when we announced his name. So really, just a nice thing to be able to celebrate. We also presented two special recognition awards yesterday, both for outstanding service. And those awards were presented to an individual and the team. The individual is Public Works Maintenance Equipment Operator Eddie Andrews, and the team are three members of the Finance Department, Billing Services Coordinator Naringa Shapiro, Accounts Receivable Coordinator Julie Guyer, and Accountant Diane Harris. All were recognized by their coworkers and supervisors for their excellent work and service to our organization and to the community as a whole. Again, yesterday was just a really great opportunity to celebrate this wonderful team that we have in that works every day so hard in service to our community. And it's really a joy to be able to talk about our group and our team in such glowing and positive ways. So I I know you'll all join me in congratulating them and thanking them for their for their service to Glencoe.
Let me just say, you know, we we do. If if it's not going to ruin their lives direct when we're back together, please do drag them in and pass along how, you know, lucky the village of Glencoe is to have folks like that working with us. I I feel, you know, very lucky that they're on our team.
Thank you, and I will share that with them, and we will certainly get them to a board meeting in the future. Just a couple of other things that I wanted to briefly report out on relative to our leaf collection program. We are in full swing right now. Crews from LRS are currently working through the community, and as of today, we've only collected about thirty two hundred cubic yards of leaves. That's about half of what we had collected this at this time last year. I think owing to the fact that we had a pretty warm fall, but don't worry, we're going to be out at least through the the early part of December. And we will we will be have our leaf crews will be working on the Friday after Thanksgiving. I just like to announce that so folks are aware of it. We are updating our website on a daily basis to advise folks where our crews are and when we expect they will be in their neighborhood. So I encourage people to to take a look at the village's website. As a side note, tying back to Trustee Mulvaney's points, the Sustainability Task Forces Leave the Leaves Campaign has a lot of great information on the village's website about the benefit of mulching and allowing leaves to stay on lawns and in flower beds and in gardens. Take a look at that information. Also on the village's website, there are some informational signs and posters that the Sustainability Task Force has done a great job of creating and posting throughout the community. I have a little sense because I'm one of those folks. I did some different things with my leaves this year in my own yard, owing to the to the information that I learned from the Sustainability Task Force. I've got a whole lot more of mulch, a whole lot more mulched leaves in my raised bed gardens and in some of my other perennial gardens. And I didn't do that in the past. So thanks to the Sustainability Task Force for even just a small, a small benefit there.
So I don't want to, I'm going to shut up after this, but likewise, we've left, we have left a lot of our leaves so far. We're not going to make it with all of them. But but so I think your collections are down in part because people are taking the Sustainability Task Force recommendation card.
I would agree. I would agree. And just then, a few quick program notes on events that are coming up. We actually have a busy about week and a half here. On Sunday, November twenty first at seven P M, the Glencoe Clergy Association is hosting the annual Interfaith Thanksgiving Service. This year, it's at St. Elizabeth's Church, which is at five fifty six Vernon. They are requiring masks if you're going to attend in person, but there's also a virtual attendance option, and so all of that information is on the village's website. As we've reported over the last several weeks, our beloved Light the Lights event returns for twenty twenty one. So next Friday, November twenty sixth, from five to seven P M, we encourage the community to come out to downtown to enjoy a really festive atmosphere with trackless train rides, hot chocolate stations, real live reindeer, live music, Santa, and of course, the illumination of hundreds of thousands of lights on every tree in downtown Glencoe. Public Works has been hard at work since the early part of the fall, getting the downtown ready for a really festive season. And we keep those lights on, as you all know, through pretty much the majority of the winter. And I think it does brighten things up, particularly in January and February, where winter can get a little bit dreary. President Rowan this year is going to be flipping the switch with his family. And I hope all of the the rest of the board is able to join us for this event. I really think it's going to be a nice opportunity to come together safely outdoors, but also for people to can to start supporting our business community for the holiday season that is upon us. At that event, we also have the one of the kickoffs for the Glencoe Community Holiday Drive. So this is a volunteer partnership that's been going on for many years between the village, the grand, the Rotary Club, and local businesses. And it kicks off Wednesday, the twenty fourth. Residents can contribute by donating toys, making a monetary donation, volunteering and more, all of which benefits families in need in Glencoe and and beyond in Nutria Township. Donations are going to be accepted during Light the Lights. There are boxes in the lobby of the village hall if folks want to drop off toys to donate to that event. And then we also have a link on the village's website to accommodate any monetary donations for that. I just also encourage, as people are are continuing a fun holiday weekend next weekend, to have folks come out and shop local on Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November twenty seventh. This is something we've made a big deal about here in Glencoe since the the tradition started about five or six years ago. Our one-of-a-kind Glencoe shops are going to be offering deals and discounts throughout the downtown and in many cases throughout the entire shopping weekend, but particularly on Sa- on Small Business Saturday. As we all know, Glencoe really is a community of small businesses. Our downtown is vibrant. Our downtown is everything we want it to be. So let's all get out there and continue to support it and to always remind ourselves to shop Glencoe first. And then, last but not least, as as I've been alluding to, next weekend's a pretty big holiday weekend with Thanksgiving. Village Hall is closed on Thursday, the twenty fifth and Friday, the twenty sixth. Thursday and Friday garbage and recycling collection is delayed by one day. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Village Manager Corrali. The next item on the agenda is the Village President's Report. And the first item on that is consideration of a proclamation supporting the twenty twenty one Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. That's been published in our agenda online, so I'm not going to read it. And I would request a motion to approve the proclamation. Is there such a motion? And then a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. We're on the right side of history there. One thing I want to mention is the village board received an email from a concerned resident noting a very long construction timeline of a neighbor that impacted residential construction projects. In addition to the typical fifteen-month permit, the village accommodates extensions in six-month increments, and we charge thirty-three percent of the original permit cost. In some cases, projects have dragged on for several permit extensions. And the resident who emailed the board complained that this repeated extension of the project is now on a third extension and possibly another one expected before the house is completed. So the neighbors are dealing with construction that seems interminable, and in this case, it was three years. I'm aware, and this is before I got on the board, that the village staff and the board conducted an extensive review of the building permit fee structure in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And I'm not suggesting a general reconsideration of that. But with the concurrence of the board, I I'd like to ask the staff to take another look at the fee structure for extensions on building permits and whether we should change the fee structure in order to encourage contractors to get on with it. And what I mean by that is, in my experience, the contractors have lots of jobs and they're juggling them, and they they, you know, go where they have to go. And if there were consequences to contractors and sometimes to homeowners to get it over with, that might increase the chances that they do get it over with and they stop torturing their neighbors. So my request is that we ask the staff to look into a change in the fee structure for for extensions. And particularly, you know, okay, maybe one extension, and then we all get that there was a pandemic. But I think it should start to get expensive if someone is going to not finish their project on time. What are your thoughts?
Totally agree.
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, I I think we have a consensus that this is a problem we should try to fix.
We will work to bring back a recommendation to the board as soon as we can.
Okay, now that takes care of the reports. The sixth item is the Consent Agenda. Because this is a virtual meeting, I'll ask the village manager to read the titles of the items on the consent agenda, and then we'll seek a motion to approve. Phil?
Thanks, President Rowan. The items on the consent agenda, the first is the October twenty twenty one Village Treasurers Report and Golf Financial Report, the October twenty twenty one Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club, the ratification of the October twenty twenty one Early Check Register List, consideration of a resolution waiving competitive bidding requirements and authorizing the village manager to execute an extension of the banking services contract with North Shore Community Bank through December thirty first, twenty twenty two, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a change order to the contract with Deech Contractors Incorporated of Zion, Illinois, for excavation spoils removal and snow hauling services for an additional cost not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. And last, consideration of an ordinance amending the comprehensive fee and fine schedule to increase the number of Class D two liquor licenses for the retail sale of alcohol liquor for off-premise consumption.
Could I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, which was published online for everybody to see?
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is is regular business. And the regular business of our meeting tonight is a public hearing pertaining to the twenty twenty one tax levy for the Village of Glencoe and the public library. And I'd like what I'd like to do is open the public hearing and ask Finance Director Nikki Larson to present.
Thank you, President Rowan. Good evening. As you may recall, particularly the Finance Committee members at their October twenty first, twenty twenty one meeting, the village board announced the scheduled public hearing of the tax levy. And we also reviewed a proposed twenty twenty one property tax levy at the Finance Committee on Tuesday, October nineteenth. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Glencoe Anchor on November fourth. And each year, the village is required to establish a property tax levy request, which basically sets the amount of taxes that the village will collect during the calendar year following the year in which the tax levy is adopted. So although we are considering the twenty twenty one tax levy this evening, it would not be collected until twenty twenty two. This year, the state is allowing a maximum allowable increase for those subject to the property tax extension limitation of one point four percent. The village has a past practice of adjusting these dollar amounts for what we anticipate we may see in new growth in our E A B, which is based off of new construction and certain certain types of building permits that the village adopts each year. With these adjusted numbers, we're looking at a village levy request of approximately two point two percent more than last year. This excludes our debt service and our fire levy, which is a very small percentage. The fire levy is a very small percentage of the village levy. The debt service levy is an automatic levy that is adopted and approved when the village board approves the issuance of general obligation bonds. The Village of Glencoe Public Library has opted to request an increase of just over two percent. And the debt service levy is is reflected there. This chart shows the extended tax levy for twenty twenty. These are the taxes that we were collecting in the current year. And then the proposed tax levy, when you aggregate everything together, the village's corporate levy, the police pension levy, the debt service levies, the small fire pension levy, and the library total. Last year's twenty twenty extended taxes was were fifteen million, four hundred and twenty seven thousand nine hundred and thirty one. And what we are proposing is just over sixteen million, which is an increase of approximately four percent. The largest driver of the increase this year will be the first debt payments associated with the bond referendum that was approved in April of this year. So you'll see that the largest increase in the levy line item is in the debt service levy, which we did anticipate. And then it was approved by the community. In terms of next steps on the property tax levy, we would propose that we would consider the approval of the tax year twenty twenty one property tax levy at the village board meeting in December. And following approval of that tax levy ordinance, we would file that levy with the Cook County Clerk's Office and move forward with collections in twenty twenty two. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody on the board have questions? And if not, we could go to public comment. And and by the way, if we don't have questions, the reason for that is we just came, we've all read the budget. We just came off of some long meetings about the budget, so this is not actually a new subject for us. Anybody on the board have questions, or should we go to public comment? See any? Okay, so is and I'll ask Assistant to the Village Manager Jordan Lester, do we have any public comments in connection with the hearing on the tax levy?
No, President Rowan, we did not receive any.
Okay, in that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the tax levy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Sorry, Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener. Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is closed session, but we've already had one of those, so I think we don't need it. So the last item is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just, did we ask, did we receive any public comments on non-agenda items tonight?
Trustee Ruben, no, we did not.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, right, let's make the record clear. Okay, there's a, there has been a motion and a second, so I think we should have a roll call and a motion to adjourn.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vry.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Even though this was a relatively short meeting, we earlier had a longer one talking about the budget, which is where everything is. Thanks, everybody, for their hard work. Happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you know, some of you at the interfaith service, and I'll see some of you at Light the Lights, but otherwise, to the board members and the staff and Glencoe residents, although I think there aren't a lot of them on this call. Happy Thanksgiving.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.